To the Secretary within the first five minutes of the Board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the Board President. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion.
Yeah, it was. Really good. Here we go. Let me see. Let me see. Yeah. I know. Like, and I did just the need I had. Yeah. You know, and it was about the meeting. And it was, yeah. We can have that. Yeah, it's weird. I have to actually go back. So. No, just let me shuffle around. Yeah. There's a couple of, I mean, a little bit more. It was not bad. It was, except it's for all the, no, it was fine. What do I have? Give it all to me. Um, we look like, I don't remember. Did I try to? Yes. Yeah. No, it was, it was, it was a rule. I mean, it was supposed to be. Friday, get them on Thursday or Thursday. Yeah, we will do. I'll make, I'll make that point. I'm sorry. I don't know. Yeah. So far, sometimes, like, it's sort of starting to, you know, a little bit of life this year. I haven't had time. Okay. No. Uh, I'm looking for members to keep in mind. Uh, and you want to round? No, no, I don't. I don't really feel like you're. But I love doing it. Yeah, I think. Twice, twice the month. Fourth of July, July 24th. Yeah. No, it was, but it's fine. What do I have? Give it all to me. Um, we look like, I don't remember. Did I try to? Yes. Yeah. No, it was, it was, it was a rule. I mean, it was supposed to be. Friday, get them on Thursday or Sunday. Yeah, we will do. I'll make, I'll make that point. I'm sorry. Oh, they were saying. So far, some kind of late, I think, it's like a sort of start of the, you know, a little bit of life this year. I haven't had time. That's been off. Okay. No. I. Uh, I'm looking for members to keep in mind. Uh, and you want to round? No, no, I don't. I don't really feel like you're. But I love doing it. Yeah, I think. Yeah. Twice, twice the month. Fourth of July, July 24th. Yeah. It was a little bit of, it was, it was driving us. It's driving us. So I could just drive to school last week. Oh, yeah. So my first day, we're going to be around. Oh, okay. I'm happy with those. Yeah. It's actually now. I just wanted to put surprises on. I've never heard, I mean, I've never been there. Yeah. 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 I've never heard, I mean, I've never been there. Yeah. 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 I've never heard, I mean, I've never been there. Yeah. Yeah. I've never heard, I mean, I've never been there. Yeah. 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 It's actually now. Yeah. 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 I've never heard, I mean, I've never been there. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District zero 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 one and the Board of Educational Service Unit number nineteen will be held on Thursday, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at six P M. in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, thirty-two fifteen Coming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Please note that the Board meetings in July and August will be at six o'clock P M. Pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen twelve of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Opens Meeting Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where rich are saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith will lead us in the OPS Vision and Mission Statement.
First, the vision, every student, every day, prepared for success. And the mission, to prepare all students for college. For success in college.
In college career and life. Roll call, Mrs. Neelis Brash.
Cassidy. Head.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Juarez.
Present.
Crackey.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Tealyn. Six present.
And for the public's information, Ms. Cassidy, Mr. Tealyn, and who else is?
Ms. Erdinberger.
Ms. Erdinberger did advise us that they would not be present at tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve their absences?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Head and seconded by Mr. Snow. Any discussion? Roll call.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Six aye.
Motion carries. Moving on now to Board and Superintendent Communications, Dr. Logan.
Good evening, President Holman, members of the Board, those here in attendance, and anyone watching from home. We meet this evening following our district's recognition of Juneteenth on Monday. I enjoy participating for the second time during my tenure here in Omaha Celebration on Saturday. Actually, they did not have it in twenty and twenty-one. Many of our students, staff, and families joined the parade. I shared several, several photos on social media with community members from North High, South High, Burke High, Crest Ridge Elementary, and Hartman Elementary, and more. It was really, really a good time, very well attended, and everybody had a good time. On Monday, we celebrated Students for Their Reading Achievements in partnership with the College World Series and the N C double A. I have to say, a highlight of my time here now is going out on the field in the College World Series. It was part of our Shared Readers Become Leaders campaign, and it was Teacher Appreciation Day. They had many teachers from all over Nebraska were honored on that day. From school visits and read-alouds in the spring to a baseball game in the summer, we all know that reading is an essential skill to practice and to maintain year-round. Speaking of reading, our students hit a milestone in the Summer Reading Challenge. We are halfway to our goal. Families have already logged one million minutes of reading. A reminder to our families that each elementary student took home several new books at the end of the school year, so you can join in. Log your minutes at OPS dot org forward slash summer reading. Congratulations to all of our young readers, and keep up the good work. And because it doesn't get dark till almost quarter to ten, you can read outside for quite a bit of time, including this evening, about three more hours where you could read outside and see very well. On tonight's agenda is the Certificate of Substantial Completion for Pine Elementary. This is another important milestone in our twenty-eighteen bond program after opening celebrations at Buena Vista and Westview High earlier in June. Thank you, voters. Schools throughout our district are seeing improvements this summer thanks to the support of our community, including H-back systems at South High and at North High. We look forward to opening celebrations at Forestation and Pine Elementary's in August. We have dates for those that we will pass along to our community. This week, many of our high schools are meeting with business and community partners to further implement college and career academies and pathways. That input builds engaging student lessons and experiences as we access to high, as we expand access to high-quality programming. Speaking of the expansion of high-quality program to all of our students and the implementation of college and career pathways, it is my pleasure to announce at this time that our chief academic officer, Susan Christopherson, has been named as the Outstanding Administrative Leader for Career and Technical Education. Please give Mrs. Christopherson a round of applause. I left the red carpet in my trunk, so I'm so sorry, Susan, but congratulations. Nobody is more deserving, hardworking, and committed, and her own children went through the programs. Our community may remember that Omaha Public Schools has four different academies named National Models at Bryan High, two at Benson High, and one at North. Final, finally, congratulations are in order for our staff and schools who earn statewide awards from Nebraska Career and Technical Education. In addition to Mrs. Christopherson, King Science and Technology Middle for their outstanding middle school program, was that the zoo program? Did I, did I have that right? Sorry. For the health program at King Science and Technology Middle. And John Yelly of North High for Outstanding Career Educator. Can we give them a round of applause in absentia? Congratulations to King Science and Tech and to Mr. Yelly. We'll have him at another time for being named the Outstanding Career Educator. That concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Colleagues, Mr. Snow?
Go first. Okay. Thank you, Madam President, and it was great seeing you and Dr. Logan at the Juneteenth Parade, and it was, it's like a family reunion, just everyone hanging out, getting to see each other, being out in the open. I remember after the parade, I was texting Dr. Logan, I said, "Man, it's been a long year," and she said, "It's been two years." I'm like, "Whoa." But I wanted to read a quote real quick for everyone, and I apologize if I mess it up, but I would like individuals, if you would, when you come to the podium from now on and you speak from your heart, it's your right, it's your five minutes, that you have an understanding of the individuals that wake up every day to make sure that the district is running, whether there are teachers, our security, our custodial staff, our administrators, administration of the district. And let me read this for you. This is a quote from Malcolm X. "The most disrespected person in America is the black woman. The most unprotected person in America is the black woman. The most neglected person in America is the black woman." We have black women in leadership in this district right now that lead our school board and lead the entire Omaha Public Schools. And in my nine years, I've never seen people come to this podium and attack the leadership of this district like that. So when you do come, I, you have the right to say whatever you want, but understand that these aren't just leaders. They didn't just get here yesterday. They had to overcome a lot, and they're tough. And I've always stood up for them, but now I'm letting you know that when you come to this podium, I am requesting that you have some inch of courtesy, the way you speak and your tone, because today's world, it's all about body language and how we interact with each other. And our kids, at the end of the day, are going to be the real victims with all this negative commotion that is going on. So I hope everyone the best, and I'm still waiting for my email from the incoming president of the O E A. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Ms. Juarez?
Thank you. I just had a brief comment myself to mention tonight because of the emails that I have received in regards to the pay raise that was proposed for our superintendent. And because I'm new and was appointed in December, I wasn't familiar with a salary package that was passed for the teachers, so I wanted you to know I got a email from the attorney so that I did have the correct facts on the salary. And I just wanted to state that I was told that they received four point six-three percent last year, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, and will receive an additional four point five-seven percent total package that will start this August. I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware and had the correct information. And I also hope that everyone will always be respectful because these are definitely tough decisions for us to make as a board. And in, always in the decisions that we're making, we're definitely have the best interests of the students at heart all the time. And I know that we won't always agree, but that really is our ultimate goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juarez. Mr. Head.
Thank you, President Dr. Holman. And Mr. Snow, I know you mentioned the Juneteenth celebration and parade, and I truly regret that I was out of town. I actually ended up spending Juneteenth this year with my kids sleeping in an airport terminal in Buffalo, New York on the way home from Disney World. Yeah, figure out how that one works. But I, the Juneteenth celebration, I absolutely love, love being a part of, and I hope that I'm able to be there next year. But I did have the opportunity to visit both Buena Vista and Westview for the openings this past month, and it was just absolutely amazing seeing the students' faces and the families as they went through the buildings and meeting and talking with the staff that are going to be at both of those schools, and just seeing the excitement that there is for those buildings to open and students to be able to experience the new, new environments. And I know we've got the two, two new elementaries coming online with the grand openings coming up, what, next, next month or is that August?
Yeah.
In August, so I can't, can't wait for those as well. And then also, I've spent the last couple of weeks and anticipate spending the rest of the summer meeting with, meeting with groups of teachers as well. I've met with teachers from a couple of elementary schools in my sub-district in northwest Omaha, but I really want to go around and really get to know the staff from, you know, from all of our schools regardless of where they are in the district. So, you know, if I haven't talked with you yet, please, please reach out. I'd love to, love to get you, get to know you and learn about, you know, what you do and how things are at your school, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Ms. Crackey?
I also went to Westview, the opening, and it's like saying I just lost my mind. It was so terrific. And they have one component that the other high school doesn't have, and that is the Y M C A is affiliated with them. And then the pool, and the kiddie pool is right there, too. So they can swim there and splash around under the umbrellas in there, and the whole thing, the gym, the everything, the, all the different rooms, different chairs, different rooms, different kind of things in this building that you haven't seen in other buildings before. So if you haven't gone out there, I know that the principal would just adore taking you around, and I would like to go there more than once because he really is a gracious person and he likes to see you. That isn't to say that mine aren't, my schools aren't, but it has been warm and some of them have been closed during the summer. They're not all in summer school. But those that are, I really hope that the children took advantage of that, and they are having the ability to catch up so that they will be ready when we get back to school. I really hope so. And again, I, I'm like Mr. Snow. If you reach out to me, I like to call, but for some reason, I didn't get back to four people that emailed me, and I wasn't able to get back to them. And I was outside with the tree man, cutting down the branches and making sure he got all of them. When you pay a ton, you want to get your money's worth, so he's coming back also. But I, I, I'm glad I got that done. That's great. When you get all those dead branches out of there, you feel so good. It almost feels like you vacuumed the house or something. So thank you for listening to all of that, but please reach out and call me. And I would like to know, when we talk about the Metro Community College, if you have a chance, could you fill us in on how that works? Because we don't have Kathy Nelson here to talk about it, and I saw it on the children going there, and can you talk about that a little bit? Because I don't think that the, I want to be the Jane tonight and ask you to fill us in on some facts.
I certainly can, can tell you that during the last four years, we have expanded the partnership with Metro Community College. Several of the programs that we offer, I'm going to give an example, for like fire science, Metro Community College has that program there. So our children from North, I'm just giving you one example, from Northwest go over to that program. We could not recreate that at our, nor should we in our high schools. So we use that, use that program there to augment our career and technical offerings as well as our academic offerings. For example, students who are, are interns this summer are, we have almost three hundred interns in our different schools. Some schools have a lot of interns, and they are able to also get dual enrollment credit if they would like through M C C, through Metro Community College, in an intro, in a kind of intro to teaching class. And lastly, we have increased our number of students who are taking a math course. Math is a gateway course in college. Many students have to take a remedial math when they get to college, regardless of where they went to school, which is a kind of an interesting fact. And we, Metro, in, in collaboration with Moak Schools, created a course so that students could take a college-level course while they're still in high school that would be their beginning course without having to take a remedial course. Do I have that correct, Ms. Christopherson? And so typically, we don't do this at this time, but, you know, in the spirit of the day, why not? So.
So I just thought, there are probably people listening or maybe in our audience that don't know how we access that very good partner.
Lastly, I did forget one thing. With our E S R funds for the next two years, no students have to pay for any dual enrollment courses regardless of the university that, where they're taking the dual enrollment.
I know it. That's why I wanted you to be sure to tell them that. That's great.
Finished, Ms. Crackey? All done?
I'm okay.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, so I'll go next, and I'll be very, very brief. You know, the world has been very negative here this past year, and particularly, a lot of disrespect, a lot of demeaning comments, a lot of demoralization of people, in particular our superintendent, a lot of false narratives and incorrect information floating around, which is really, really saddening. I can say that this woman right here to the left of me works extremely hard, has led this school district in a direction that it has never gone before in the most positive way. I will say that it's okay to dislike a person, but it's awful when you still can't have conversations as human beings with one another. She sits here and she takes a lot of terrible comments. As I said before, a lot of false allegations, a lot of straight-up lying during public comment, and it's awful. And no one wants to be ridiculed or accused or made to feel belittled at any point in their lives. Not me, I'm sure not any of you. Dr. Logan is our employee, and we work with her as our employee. We evaluate her fairly as anyone else who works in this world gets evaluated, hopefully fairly. We will not ever demoralize her or disrespect her at this table. If there are conversations that we need to have with her, we have those with her, but not in the public's eye, because those conversations are between us as the Board of Education and she as our employee. Now, I understand that a lot of people, you may not know truth from fact, and you're only going off of what you hear, and that's unfortunate. So when you all email us, and believe you me, we get droves of emails, and it's, we're sorry that we can't always get to all of those emails, but we do attempt to. But when we ask you, "Hey, let's have a conversation. Would you like to meet with us?" People don't want to do that. We are human beings, and we need to converse respectfully so that we can have positive, clear dialogue. So despite all of the negativity, all of the negative commentary, all of the negative communications that we've been getting because of dislike for the superintendent of our schools, who we are very pleased with, I want to go ahead and highlight something that she has been recognized for this week. She was spotlighted as the Women's Center for Advancement in this two thousand twenty-two tribute to women honorees. Just to give you a little bit of information about that, the W C A spotlights women whose work, dedication, and commitment have grown and shaped women and girls in Omaha. So there are plenty of people in our city, and especially through our state, who sees our superintendent not only as just the superintendent of the Omaha Public Schools, but as a tremendous leader across the city and this state, and also recognized across this nation, a mentor and somebody to look up to. So thank you, Dr. Logan, for your leadership, your expertise, and your care for our students, because when it comes down to it, I don't care what anyone says, all the decisions that she makes are for the benefit of the children in our schools. She did not come here to Omaha, Nebraska for her benefit. She came here to Omaha, Nebraska for the children of our school district. And I thank her for coming here to be the superintendent and caring for the students and the families of our school district. So congratulations, Dr. Logan, on your recognition this week. Moving on now to public comment and recognition. Tonight, we have two speakers who have submitted request to speak forms. The Board has adopted policy eighty-three forty-six, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. The same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit, excuse me. Mrs. Neelis Brash will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have thirty seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mrs. Neelis Brash know, and one will be provided for you. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not identify that student or staff member and instead provide that information to Mrs. Neelis Brash. She will assist us into looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Mrs. Neelis Brash, and she will make sure that each member of the Board gets a copy. As a reminder, with last year's passage of L B eighty-three by the Nebraska Legislature, the Board of Education is legally obligated to require any member of the public desiring to address the Board to identify him or herself, including an address and the name of any organization you may represent unless the requirement is waived for security reasons. We do not have anybody asking for that. We do not have anybody asking for that waiver tonight. So another reminder is that you please remain seated until you are carted to the podium and also please remain at the podium and do not leave and approach the board table. If you do have materials to distribute, please let me know and Mrs. Neela Sprash will come and get them from you. The time is now 6:25 and the first speaker for tonight is Janet Cole.
Good evening. My mother taught at North High School for many years while-
Excuse me, ma'am, could you please state and spell your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Janet, J-A-N-E-T, Cole, K-O-H-L-L, 107 South 128th Plaza, Omaha. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My mother taught at North High School for many years while raising six children. Two of my sisters became teachers, so I know firsthand the long hours, efforts, and struggles teachers deal with. I've heard many stories. I am grateful to so many teachers who have taught my own five children at OPS. The number of teachers leaving this district is unprecedented. It's not a rumor, it's not hearsay, it's a fact. Many teachers don't feel that the top administration under the leadership of Cheryl Logan has their back. This is not the time for a contract extension and a raise for the superintendent. Her current total compensation is nearly half a million dollars. Cheryl Logan has no personal ties to this city, state, or region. Her decision whether to remain in this position or to go likely will not be impacted by your vote tonight. But voting for a raise and a contact, contract extension for the superintendent at this time will definitely send the wrong message to OPS teachers, that the current state of affairs in OPS is not only acceptable, but is to be rewarded. A wise person once said, "Don't listen to what people say, watch what they do." You say you value the teachers, they are watching what you will do tonight.
Our next speaker for tonight is John Kunkel.
My name is John J-H-N Kunkel, K-U-N-K-E-L, and I'm only indirectly representing Student Transportation for America, I suppose, that's where I work.
Address, please.
Oh, yeah. 5127 Pratt, Omaha, 68104. I'm here tonight, first of all, I want to thank you, Dr. Logan, for being here and leading us in this, this gargantuan task of providing an education for our students. My role as a bus driver has been affected severely by the COVID phenomenon and as all have, but, but I, I have witnessed the situation evolving in a negative way. I've worked there six years and I've done this previously, but every year, it seems to get harder and harder to do the job. And I was amazed at what OPS had decided to do for their school bus drivers and I applaud that. I mean, I think they're going through the same things we are, but there seems to be a huge discrepancy in both the pay and recognition. And that OPS has, has awarded them a one-time bonus for, what's it, $22.50 for part-time workers and nothing for SDA employees, although we do the same job. We transport the bulk of the students actually compared to what OPS transports. For example, the 11% raise on a typical wage of $20 an hour, let's just a level, approximate middle ground, amounts to $2.20 an hour for, for the OPS drivers, whereas SDA drivers are governed by a contract negotiated with the, with the school district. And, and the drivers with the SDA, which amounts to 40 cents an hour versus $2.20 an hour. That amounts to a .8% raise, not even 1%, whereas OPS drivers are getting 11%, okay? And roughly over, figuring 25 hours a week over average, over a yearly period, that amounts to $2,860 for the OPS drivers. For SDA drivers, $520. That's a 5.5 and a half times larger amount than, than what's happening with us. And we're all pretty much, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say taxed to the limit, but it's pushing limits, okay? We're, we need to, I'm worried that if, if the retention issue isn't addressed through some kind of change in, in the monetary compensation. I, I'll tell you what, I was looking at the Nation Magazine, the cover this week had a picture of a automatic weapon with a, with the cartridges being thoughts and prayers, thoughts and prayers, thoughts and prayers. As if those were some kind of change, you know? The actual change, what's needed is to get rid of the damn guns, you know, and to do something about that. But you know, it's, it's nice to be appreciated. I don't get, don't get me wrong, but, but with inflation at eight and a half percent and we're getting a paltry sum, .8% raise, I mean, that's, we're losing ground. And, and as far as retaining people, it's tough. You know, I got offered $30 an hour to go back to my old job. I don't want to do my old job anymore. I'm older and it's hard work, you know? Not that this isn't hard work, this is a different kind of hard work, but, but I didn't want to go back to that. One minute, you say? Somebody say that? Oh, okay. I'll try to wrap here, but it's just, I don't know what can be done, really, you guys, because it's locked into a contractual basis and, you know, one thing I did, I did find out this week was that David Prince, the chief operating officer of SDA, has said that if, if OPS were to give-
30 seconds.
-the drivers some kind of bonus like that, given the drivers, for the OPS drivers, that he would pass that on directly to the drivers. It would not go into the SDA bankroll or whatever. So basically, I just, I worry because the kids are stressed, more kids are on the bus, it's harder to make the time and, and they're stressed enough as it is, you can't address them individually. It's tough because you-
That's time. Okay, moving on now to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Snow and seconded by Mr. Smith. I will be abstaining from item H13. Are there any other extensions? Okay. Roll call, Mrs. Neela Sprash.
Holman.
Aye.
Warris.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Aye.
Six, aye.
Motion carries. Moving on now to information items. Item I-2A, Staff Presentation on K6, Special Education Reading Intervention and Related Resource Materials Adoption for Use Beginning with the 2022-2023 School Year. And tonight, we have Ms. Christine Pereira and Ms. Janelle Hesser with us. Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a new pro-
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a new pro-
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 Good evening.
Teachers were provided surveys to complete at the conclusion of field testing where they rated the programs on usability, assessments, materials, quality of training and instructional methods. Overall, they responded favorably for sound sensible and Spire at a level of eighty-four point one percent. The feedback for the chosen resource provided by our teachers, a small sample of which is highlighted on the screen, is a testament to the energy and excitement they had for this program. Special education teachers and students shared a preference for sound sensible and Spire as they best meet the needs of our students with reading disabilities. Sound sensible focuses on instruction in phonemic awareness and alphabet recognition. Spire is designed to build reading success through an intensive, structured and scripted curriculum that incorporates phonemic awareness, phonics, spelling, vocabulary, comprehension and fluency in a dynamic ten-step lesson plan. Explicit teacher-led instruction is data-driven to shore up student needs with continual practice and review. Specific skills taught in the programs can be referenced on the scope and sequence on page one of the handout we provided you this evening. In addition, the programs are based on Orton-Gillingham Principles, which incorporate literacy practices for students with reading disabilities, including dyslexia. Its methods focus heavily on explicitly teaching the connections between letters and sounds in a very structured way, breaking literacy down into smaller sequential skill sets that can be worked upon using a multi-sensory approach, meaning hearing, seeing and often touching or drawing to help improve their reading skills. Page two of the handout we provided tonight includes a more detailed description of the materials in each kit. The kits comprise of an easy-to-use scripted teacher guide, student decodable books to practice the letter and skill sounds being taught, consumable student workbooks and black line masters. It also comes with word cards to reinforce decoding skills and manipulative letter kits for students to engage in hands-on learning. The skills in this intervention are to be delivered by a teacher to the student. However, a blended learning model can be achieved through the one-to-one technology initiative as the materials are compatible with student devices. Thank you for your continued support of special education in the Omaha Public Schools. The adoption of these instructional materials will lay the foundation for effective reading intervention instruction for students with reading disabilities. The special education division will be working with colleagues in other departments to craft a comprehensive implementation plan. Our goal is to begin working with teachers this summer on projects to prepare for implementation this fall. We look forward to providing professional development opportunities at Curriculum Day and throughout the year as we continue to monitor and support the use of these high-quality instructional materials. We know and understand it is the talents and skills of our teachers that bring the curriculum to life for our students. Thank you for your time. We look forward to bringing this back along with the negotiated agreements from the selected vendor for your approval at a future meeting.
Fantastic, thank you both for the presentation tonight and for being here with us. Questions, colleagues?
I was wondering if you could go into, because I often get inquiries from parents who really love the methodology of Orton-Gillingham. I'm a fan too, I can't deny that. Can you just talk just a little bit more about, you kind of gave some about the use of Orton-Gillingham for students, especially those with language-based disabilities?
Yeah, it's a multi-sensory learning approach for students with reading disabilities, particularly dyslexia. What it does is it really explicitly teaches the connections between letters and letter sounds and previously taught skills, excuse me, using a very multi-sensory approach like we kind of talked about in our presentation tonight, using sight, you know, all your senses, sight, hearing, feeling, touching, drawing and things.
Mr. Head.
Thank you, President Dr. Holman, and thank you for the presentation, I appreciate it. This all sounds very exciting and I'm excited to see it in work hopefully next year with our students. I know you mentioned towards the end there that the, I guess, main goal is to have this be, you know, taught and implemented kind of in-person, not over the one-to-one technology with the iPads, but it's still feasible to work with the iPads if we end up going remote or have a student that works better that way.
Yes, there is an online component where you can use the same materials but virtually.
Okay, perfect. And I heard you say, I met with a group of elementary teachers yesterday morning, actually, and they were, you know, telling me about how they can't stand using AMIRA and I read and all that and I'm sure you've heard the same stories before. And one of them is that, you know, if a student's talking to it or reading to it, it doesn't necessarily always pick up everything or if they get up to go to the bathroom, it labels them as, you know, not reading at a proficient speed, you know, things like that. So I guess if a student is using these materials, you know, in a, over one-to-one technology, is there a way for the teacher to still kind of override it and have a human aspect in there?
Yes, it is all teacher-led, so even if it is over one-on-one technology, the teacher is leading the lesson through the technology.
Okay, perfect, thanks so much.
Mr. Smith.
My question is pretty quick. How will this impact our ESL learners and dual-language learners or is there something else for them?
Well, this intervention is for students in special education with reading disabilities, so there could be a chance that students in those other programs might be in special education as well. And if they were, then more than likely, they would receive this intervention.
Mr. Snow.
Thank you, Madam President. It's interesting, my brother just graduated and got his master's in public accounting and he was labeled, was put in special education for reading disabilities and he does my taxes now, he's a very smart man. If I'm a, I don't know who this would answer this question, but it's been over ten years. As you know, some of our guardians have had several generations or different groups have propiqued through special education. What would you tell them about the program that is being implemented, potentially being implemented in the future as opposed to the program that we're walking away from? Because that is the key, because those individuals are going to really have to work with that student. You know, you're the expert, so how would you explain it to them? Because those are going to be your most skeptical individuals.
So currently, our programs that we are using right now aren't as multi-sensory usable and they don't necessarily always break the skills down in that sequential, small step sequence that our students really do need. And then along with that, we know that repetition for our students with reading disabilities is very beneficial and so just that constant repetition of the skills that are part of the scope and sequence and built into the program are some of the aspects that would really benefit than what we have currently.
Is there, is there a portion of this program that would be able to allow them to help their student at home a little bit better? You know, bring them up to speed on how to kind of do more of that remediation to make sure that they're ready to learn when they go back to school that next day?
Yep, yes, there are some activities that students are able to do at home and as well with just even reading of text. As we know, they'll be practicing through the readers that are part of the kits that are in this program.
And I have one last question, I'm assuming everything's going to go well, because I'm very hopeful. Way that if I'm a guardian or if I'm a, let's just say, someone interested in a mentor and one of my students, that I can look at where they're at and if they're falling behind so the teacher can say, this is where they're at, this is where they need to be and I need you to help me get them to this point because if they can't get to this point, it's just going to continue to be a struggle.
Absolutely. I would encourage any guardian to reach out to the I E P case manager, the special education teacher that's working with their child and they will be able to guide them on where the student is at now, where they're going and how to get there.
And they're also very, in the program, there are placement assessments as well as progress monitoring as well. That would help give us the data and information to-
So you'll be able to see that if they're on ten steps and the student's on step three and they're supposed to be caught, okay. That would be very helpful and with implementation, I would love to see a little portion of how the teachers can be equipped with that to hand them to all the community members because we need everybody in this, this is real work. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
I do have one final question for you. I know you shared some comments from both students and teachers and as experts in the field, is there anything else additions that you would like to add that you particularly like, really like about this reading program?
Oh, I, all of it. I must say, this program has led the way for this entire process. From the initial reviews, this was the program rate of the highest. Then asking the teachers that actually implemented it, this by far was the highest. The students, you saw their feedback, they loved it. They felt like they made progress in that short field testing window. So I feel like all of that just speaks for itself, it's a fabulous program.
Positive feedback.
I love that a student used the vocabulary term phoneme.
The teacher taught that.
Fantastic, Ms. Crackey.
Is there a school where you are implementing that that we could go visit?
We had field tested up until the end of the school year here and so right now-
Right now, nothing?
Not for summer school during this level learning.
So when you start in, where would that be?
Well, we're going to start district-wide and elementary, we're hoping this fall. So we're hoping at Curriculum Day to train teachers.
I see, okay.
So then they will use this intervention starting next school year, hopefully.
Sounds, sounds interesting and that's why I wanted to know, I, you know, want to go see it, thank you.
Any other questions, colleagues? Fantastic, well, thank you so much for the presentation and being with us tonight. Thank you so much. Okey-dokey. Moving on the agenda this evening, item J one, C B O C update of the Phase One and Phase Two Bond Programs in May two thousand twenty-two and item J two, Third Quarter Board Conference Expenses, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. We do not have a closed session tonight and before we depart, I did want to make sure to acknowledge Mr. Ryan Al at the board table with us as our CFO. So welcome and we're so glad that you're with us. You're welcome, all right. That concludes tonight's meeting. Let the record reflect that the board meeting adjourned tonight at six fifty-three P M. Thank you all for coming with us tonight.
You know the new rule, the CFO has to buy me lunch, the new one that comes on.